All right, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Freitas.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
And Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Thank you.
We will do a salute to the flag. Thank you. I will move to approval of minutes for the regular meeting from September 10th, 2025.
I apparently live to move approval of minutes.
Perfect.
We'll do that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll move to oral communications and I will state if anyone's here, we are, we, the applicant has pulled the general plan comformance review, which was new business H1, and that is pulled from the agenda tonight indefinitely. So if you're here for that, I'll save you the time. It's for the general plan comformance review for the county acquisition at 432-5 Broadway. The oral communications is meant for anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda tonight. Yeah, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to come on up. If it's, yeah, if it's a matter that's on the agenda, then that, then that would not be the time to speak, but.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, no problem. Great. I can't see the Zoom, so yeah, if you have someone on Zoom.
Phone number that ends in 266, if you'd like to go ahead and start speaking.
I apologize. I was under the impression that this was a special meeting just for a particular matter, but evidently it's a regular meeting. So I'm not certain if the matter that I'm speaking to is on the agenda or if I'm supposed to speak during the open comment period.
What matter is it you're looking for?
It's the vacation rental on East Avenue.
That's coming up next.
Okay, so that's on the agenda. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll close oral communications and we will move on to our public hearings for the BOMOD vacation rental F1.
Clicker is not working. Yeah, it's on. All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Lowhefner, a senior planner here to present the BOMOD vacation rental minor use permit. The property is located at 1110 East Avenue and is zoned R3 High Residential with an HDR High Density Residential Land Use designation. The applicant proposes to utilize an 1,175 square foot single-family residence as a short-term vacation rental with no proprietor on-site. The property is located on a 4,300 square foot interior lot just south of Myrtle Avenue. The entire residence will be available for rent and has three bedrooms and one bathroom. The fenced backyard will also be available to rental guests, but the garage will not. On-site parking is not required per Eureka Municipal Code, but according to the applicant, there are two on-street parking spaces in front of the house. Per Eureka Municipal Code, new vacation rentals with no proprietor on-site in the R3 zone require a minor use permit. As part of the minor use permit process, a notice of pending action was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site on September 16th of this year, which described how to request a public hearing. Subsequently, a public hearing was requested, and the concerns expressed in the request generally pertain to a lack of available housing for Eureka residents and potential negative economic impacts locally. The full text of the request for hearing is included as attachment 3. The public hearing was scheduled for today, and a notice of public hearing was then mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, as well as a noticing sign placed in front of the subject property. During this noticing period, the city received another set of public comments with regard to parking and potential safety concerns along East Avenue, concerns which are generally addressed in the Director's staff report in attachment 2. Currently, both permitted and unpermitted vacation rentals take up about 1.5% of the total housing stock within city limits. Of that, there are currently 96 permitted vacation rentals comprising approximately 0.8% of the city's total housing stock. We mapped the area to show the proximity of existing vacation rentals to the proposed rental at 1110 East Avenue, and as the figure illustrates, the closest vacation rental is located on West Avenue over 900 feet from the subject property, and there is generally a very light concentration of permitted vacation rentals in this area of Eureka. To approve a minor use permit, the commission must make all of the following findings. One, the site is suitable for the size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use. The proposed use will be compatible with existing and planned land uses in the vicinity. The proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, and the site is properly located within the city and adequately served by existing or planned services and infrastructure. The commission must also find that the project meets CEQA requirements. In this case, the proposed project is categorically exempt from CEQA under a Class 1 Existing Facilities exemption. While findings have been made to support the proposed use, the city maintains enforcement provisions to ensure the use maintains consistency with standards. A permit for, a permit or approval for any vacation rental use may be revoked upon finding one or more of the following: that the proprietor, property owner, or emergency contact has been negligent in responding to an emergency situation more than two times in a rolling 12-month period; more than two documented law enforcement violations related to the vacation rental have occurred in a rolling 12-month period; the vacation rental use has been chronically noncompliant with code requirements; the vacation rental owner has failed to pay required transient occupancy taxes despite warnings from the finance department; and finally, the proprietor or property owner has failed to correct noted building or fire code violations. Documented violations can lead to permit revocation in accordance with Eureka Municipal Code, which would require a public hearing by the review authority from the original permit, which in this case would be a public hearing in front of the planning commission. Closer. Based on the analysis in the Director's staff report in attachment 2, staff finds that the proposed use meets the required findings for approval of a minor use permit, and should substantial nuisance complaints arise, the city may pursue remedies under the permit revocation process. Therefore, staff recommends you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the application. I do have a suggested motion when you are ready, and the applicant and myself are available for comment, questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? None here. All right, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes, and we do appreciate if you state your name.
Hello, my name is Sarah Dara. I live at 1209 West Avenue, so I'm directly behind them across the alley. My concerns are related to the fact that this used to be one of those crossroads houses, so actually a living space was converted to a bedroom. It's under 1,200 square feet, and it probably should be a two-bedroom if it's going to be rented either as a vacation rental or other rental. I'm concerned that the vacation rental, because they're saying it's three-bedroom, would allow eight adults and unlimited children under 12, which means there could be 20 or more people there, and it doesn't really meet that need, I don't think. If it was at least a two-bedroom, then they would be limited, and I believe also if they didn't do it as a vacation rental, that they, and it was two-bedroom, there would be a lot fewer people there. I know that the city doesn't require parking, but East Avenue is very crowded. Nobody parks in driveways almost, except for one or two people. Everybody else has their cars in the alley, even people from that street, that's 13th Street, and a lot of people use that as a shortcut to get around the stoplight of the corner of Merlin West. So there's a lot of traffic going in and out, that 90-degree there between 13th and East, and there's a blind corner at the end, and it's just a kind of a hazardous way to have traffic going in and out. So I'm just concerned that if it gets approved, that they can have this vacation rental with three bedrooms, that once it's approved, we can't ever redress it, and I think it's just too many people for that small a space, and I think that there are a lot of safety and traffic hazards around that block.
Thank you, Sarah. Looks like we can move to the Zoom commenter. No one else is stepping up?
If anybody on Zoom wants to speak in the public hearing, please raise your hand so we can unmute you. If you will go ahead with the phone number, ending in 266, state your name, please, and your residence, and then you can go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Scott Willetts. I live at 1234 Myrtle Avenue, just around the corner from the residence in question. I want to voice my multiple objections to the conversion of homes in my neighborhood to absentee owner, short-term vacation rentals for profit. My family are longtime locals. We've owned this home since 2011. Our driveway is at the rear, so we have to use East Avenue to access our home. For many reasons, I believe that we, along with all of our neighbors, will be negatively impacted if this proposal is approved, and I don't see any mitigations to offset the harms that we will suffer over time. To be blunt, vacation rentals are lucrative for property owners, but they really only have negative impacts on the neighbors. There's a loss of community connection. Long-term residents create relationships. Neither absentee owners nor their guests have any vested interest in the neighborhood, and we'll find ourselves living next to a property that is essentially a revolving door for strangers, leading to frustration and diminished quality of life. And I recognize that these are subjective complaints, so I'd like to talk about a few objective parameters. There is a wide imbalance between housing costs and income levels throughout our state, and that's especially true right here in Eureka. As more and more properties are converted into vacation rentals, the availability of long-term rental units decreases, making it harder for families to afford to live in their own neighborhoods. The very fabric of our community is threatened as long-term residents are pushed out in favor to, in favor of transient guests. Vacation rentals put a strain on local services and infrastructure, and parking is already a problem in our neighborhood, and now our streets will be even more congested with cars from guests. Fire trucks and ambulances will have more trouble navigating these areas, putting residents at risk, and frankly, I'm going to have a hard time getting my boat into my property because I've got to make a very tight turn from East Avenue onto the 13th Street alley, and if there's anybody blocking the corner there, I'm just stuck blocking traffic. Looking at the bigger picture, all that rental income is being spent somewhere else, not here. Sure, maybe you get a few dollars in lodging taxes, but the multiplier effect of dollars earned and dollars spent by locals is completely negated. The money collected by the absentee owner does not circulate here. The introduction of new absentee owner short-term vacation rentals has significant detrimental impacts on existing neighbors and the economic well-being of the larger community. We saw the problems that Trinidad had when they failed to get in front of this, and Humboldt County Grand Jury had to get involved. We must advocate for policies that protect our communities, ensuring that they remain vibrant, cohesive, and livable for the residents, the people who actually live here. We can only do that if we prioritize the needs of our neighborhoods over the interests of absentee owners. Too often, communities make decisions, whether actively or passively through inaction, that essentially privatize profits while socializing the costs. Please don't let that happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Just to make sure no one else is here, I would like to speak on this matter. No more hands raised on Zoom. All right. I'll bring it back to the commissioners for motion and discussion. Can you bring that motion back up onto the screen for us?
You know, I feel like some of the concerns I've heard tonight are similar to ones that we have heard for other vacation rentals and that this commission has also voiced. I know that we've already had a discussion sort of at a higher level about vacation rentals in the community, and so I was wondering if the deputy director could give us an update on the compliance drive and any movement at the city council on this issue, because they ultimately lead policy in this area.
Yeah, unfortunately, Director Kenyon couldn't be here tonight. She is out ill. She is on Zoom, so I'm not sure if she wants to speak to it, but I do know that she has been working on an update to, it's almost gotten to the top of her list to work on updating the regulations. But unfortunately, I can't speak to what's happening at the city council level.
Commissioner Kraft, do you have any information based on the work you had done previously?
I don't have any updates beyond what the associate director just shared. I will say that, you know, a number of Mr. Willetts' concerns are ones that this commission has passed along to the city council. I personally am not afraid of 1.5% of vacation rentals as part of our housing stock, but if it were to double from that, that would be a concern for me, and we voiced similar things like that in the formal report to the council that we made. Commissioner Lazar and I were the spearheads on a study group on this. So, you know, I, I find myself very sympathetic to the concerns, but I also don't believe that we have policy from the city council that says anything but this application colors within the lines and is, you know, we don't have hard grounds on which to disapprove it.
Yeah, I would agree, and I guess I would follow up to say that for the, for the listener and speaker on Zoom, I would definitely encourage you to forward your comments to the council as well. They were well, well said. I'm assuming you had them written down, so if you would be willing to put them in an email, it might help to raise this with the city council as well. Thank you.
One more time, Raylene, we didn't hear you.
Director Kenyon has her hand up.
Oh.
On Zoom also.
Thanks.
Raylene, can you make her a co-host?
Yeah, okay, I can talk now. Hi, this is Director Kenyon. I just wanted to speak to the question. The council at their strategic visioning did not mention vacation rentals, and so they haven't voiced it as a priority. I did, you know, draft updated regulations that I brought to planning commission many months ago now, and I am working quickly towards an inland zoning code update that's mostly focused on objective design standards, but I am planning on adding the vacation rental amendment into that as part of that code update. So I'm planning on first bringing that to architects and design specialists to review, hopefully in the next month or two, and then to planning commission and city council.
So I just wanted to say, I, I believe the public comments we received were, I also feel like they were appropriate and similar to ones we'd heard before, and I share, I think, the same feeling about, while it is important to hear that we have a different perspective in the community towards the benefits and the pros and cons of vacation rentals, we really aren't in a position with an item like this to use that as a point to approve or deny a project. Having said that, there are a number of findings that we have to make for approving discretionary permits. Two of the ones that Mr. Lowhefner went over in his presentation that I find to be relevant to the situation is finding four, which is that it's not detrimental to property owners in the vicinity, or five, that it's located and adequately served by infrastructure. And I think in this case, I visited the site before the meeting tonight. I noted the narrowness. It's a 30-foot alley, according to the Assessor Parcel page, or not alley, but the road, East Avenue, is a 30-foot right-of-way, which is pretty, pretty narrow for city standards, which means that if you think of a car as an eight-foot-wide thing on either side of the alley, that leaves, you know, basically maybe 14 feet of room for vehicles, which is not enough for two vehicles to pass if cars are parked, and that's with a fully available 30 feet, and I don't think it is fully 30 feet. So because of that, I think that even though off-street parking isn't a requirement for these permits, we have to look at the site in which the proposal is located, and this is not like every other normal right-of-way in the city where you do have on-street parking, and therefore, it's not, there are special, unique circumstances in this particular location that make that an issue. So when I was out there, I looked at both sides of the property. I believe the alley could accommodate, I mean, there's a garage off the alley. It doesn't look like it would be practical for parking vehicles. However, there is sufficient room adjacent to the garage that's fenced that could be made into an off, you know, like an off-alley parking space. And to me, those are just, you know, if you're trying to get along with your neighbors and you're, you're sensitive to the context under which you're proposing something, whether you live here or don't, you, you incorporate things like that that kind of lower the, the temperature. And so I think it's just a logical thing to offer in this kind of a situation. It's not a principally permitted use. There are unique circumstances here, and to me, it would make sense to require the applicant to develop that as a condition of approval, and I'm certainly interested to hear what other commissioners think about that, and I'd be interested to see if there's issues with that, you know, as far as the applicant's concerned, but that to me seemed like getting towards trying to address some of the input we received, maybe not all of it.
I think that's a well-thought-out concern, and I am reminded of, I had to recuse myself for a similar vacation rental that came up in my neighborhood, and we, I live in the same kind of like narrow street, and if I recall, like I said, I was, I had to refuse, but I think that you all denied it for similar reasons to do with parking and alley access. So there is some precedent for that. Just thought I would add that in.
So Commissioner Lazar, you're proposing potentially conditioning it to require a perpendicular parking space accessed from the alley to be put next to the garage?
Yeah, on the property, and it probably wouldn't comply with visibility with the way the garage is situated, but it is an alley and not a main street, so I'm less concerned about that. So.
We haven't heard from the applicant. Is the applicant on Zoom? I, I don't believe they're present if they haven't stood up. If that is the applicant and they're willing to engage, that would be great, I guess.
The applicant's on Zoom?
I'm, I'm trying.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yeah, so I am associated with the property. The applicant is here and has asked me to speak on her behalf. I will be the onsite and local person that's on call if there's any issues, and one of the reasons why this is being turned into a vacation rental is because the property owner is in town part-time. They come and go. They have a job that calls them to other parts of the country. When they need to go, they go, and so ideally, their house isn't sitting empty while they're away at work.
Ken, are they, are they actually available to you to ask a direct question?
I can answer questions if you want to, but are you saying you don't want to speak with me?
No, no, no. I was just wondering, Commissioner Lazar had made a suggestion. I don't know if you caught on to that about, yes.
Yeah.
So can you?
Yeah, I believe that the backyard could accommodate parking space. There would definitely need to be some changes made to the fencing to accommodate that.
And that's something the applicant would be willing to consider?
We can definitely make accommodations, whatever is necessary, as long as it's within our financial, you know, limitations, which we would just need to look at it and see what that would require, and, but yeah, we're definitely willing to work. We want everyone in the neighborhood to be happy. We're not trying to make a killing here. This is not like a business that we're trying to do. It's just trying to prevent her house from standing empty when she's away at work.
Okay, that's understood. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to commissioners for further discussion.
If I could just add one thing, I did, you know, this was accrued before the meeting, but I did look at the properties in the vicinity just to try to see, you know, how unusual the circumstances were, and it looked to me like, I counted 22 of everything fronting east or the alley, or, you know, in the neighboring parcels, I counted 22 parcels that had off-street parking, even if that's parking in your lawn or something, but somewhere where you could drive off of the street onto the property, of 24 parcels. So over 90% of the neighboring properties have some form of off-street parking, not, there were two parcels that clearly did not. But that's, to me, like, the vast majority of the neighbors, albeit they don't, maybe don't have sufficient parking for all the vehicles they have, and maybe have a greater number of occupants than might otherwise occur, they have at least one space. So to me, it seems reasonable. It's not a, it's not a special extraordinary request to make that development in this case.
I'll just chime in to say I, I like where Commissioner Lazar is leading us.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'd be hard to make findings of denial in this case. It doesn't seem like there's any truly unique circumstances that would be detrimental to public safety, but I agree, if the applicant, you know, is able to accommodate it, I think it's a good compromise. But I am curious to know if staff sees any issue with the parking being designed in that way from like a vision clearance perspective.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if they have to modify the fence to do the parking space, we'll make them comply with the vision clearance area requirements, so meaning instead of a nine-foot-wide opening, it would need to be, I can't do math off the top of my head, five feet on either side, 15, like, so 20 feet would probably have to modify the fence, about 20 feet to get the parking space in there and have the vision clearance area.
But since they aren't required per the code, do we have the ability to require that of the applicant, or is it just something that we can suggest, or?
I, I think, you know, Steve Lazar, Commissioner Lazar hit the nail on the head that if it's a condition to help make the finding, you can certainly add that as a condition, whether it's Whether it's, you know, financially feasible to the applicant, you know, that, that would affect their permit, right? If you add it as a condition and then they can't do it. Then they'd have to come back here and we could do another notice public hearing to remove that condition. But certainly you can require that to make the finding.
So I don't know if you guys can see, but this is a picture I took before the meeting. So it would be this fence right here that's next to the green building. And I don't see it being a financial hardship. We're talking about graveling an area in the yard perhaps and. Removing some fencing and relocating. They could probably recycle the fencing and push it to the back, you know, so. I'm not worried about that. And it seems like they're agreeable to trying it out, but it would need to be a condition of approval.
Okay. Do you want to pull that motion back up? And Commissioner Lazar, would you like to give it a go with including the new condition?
I'll move that Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the minor use permit for the Bawad. Vacation rental at eleven-ten East Avenue with an additional condition of approval included. Requiring that a one-off-street parking space be developed at the rear of the property, access from the alley. With the entrance coming. Adjacent to the existing garage and that the fencing be relocated to, to conform with the. Visibility requirements of the code.
I wanted to jump in here and offer also, if they can't do that, maybe require them to use the garage.
I think that.
It doesn't seem very likely. From my looking at it, yeah, it seems like that wouldn't be useful.
And, yeah, do you have a second? Um, we can do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Indeed, thank you. We'll move forward to F2, the black market cannabis retail.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Assistant Planner Gonzalez. And today or tonight, I will be presenting the conditional use permit for the black market cannabis retail. At two-two-three-five Broadway. Here's a bird's eye view of the project site, which is located along the western edge of the city. Zooming in, the site outlined here in red is about two thousand one hundred and twenty square feet in size and is located along the east. Side of Broadway, just north of Cave C and south of a vacant building. Site is located in the service commercial zoning district and is located on land with a general commercial land use designation. It is developed with a two-story, one hundred and one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot vacant building outlined here in blue. And has an approximately twenty-two foot by forty foot unimproved potential parking and loading area. Which is accessed by an existing drop curb along Broadway. Historic records show a variety of former uses, including an antique shop, a chainsaw and motorcycle repair shop. And most recently, a utility conduit and landscaping business. The property was abated in two thousand eleven. And the last business license was pulled in twenty eighteen. So it's assumed that the site has been vacant since twenty nineteen. Here's a preliminary site plan, which is also included in attachment two in the staff report. Within the existing structure outlined here in purple, the applicant proposes to use seven hundred and one square feet for retail. With viewing rooms, four hundred and thirty-nine square feet for restricted cultivation area. Four hundred and fifty square feet for office and employee areas. Hours of operation will be Thursday through Sunday from noon to six P M. And two part-time employees are anticipated, where staffing can reach a maximum of four employees. No parking is proposed, but staff conducted a site visit on September sixteen, twenty twenty-five and confirmed that one park compliant parking space. Can fit in the unimproved area to the north. While traditional developments models often emphasize substantial parking, this project reflects a shift to smaller scale. Multimodal developments which rely on local pedestrian and bicycle facilities rather than extensive parking. This approach aligns with original planning goals and local planning goals that prioritize multimodal transportation. Consistent with the Broadway multimodal corridor plan and the Broadway middle couplet project initiation report, which was approved by Caltrans in twenty twenty-three. Notably, there will be a nearby Caltrans improvement, which will feature pedestrian crossing just a few feet south of the project site. That's enabling pedestrian access from the western southbound side of Broadway to the. Sorry, eastern northbound side of Broadway where the site and Cave C are located. Cannabis uses are regulated by EMC Chapter one fifty-eight, which divides them into three categories, general cannabis use, which includes indoor cultivation and distribution. Cannabis retail and chemical cannabis extraction, general. General cannabis use is principally permitted in the service commercial district, while cannabis retail requires a conditional use permit. And as a result, CUP is required for this project. Under specific permits and approvals, the Planning Commission has authority over, is a review authority for the CUP. Lastly, the applicant is required to address certain non-conforming site features as part of the CUP process. Improvements. Include adding short-term bicycle parking, upgrading lighting and screening waste and recycling. And this is going to be. Confirmed to be compliant before a certificate of occupancy is issued. There are five required findings for a condition of approval, conditional use permit, requiring that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and zoning code. That the site is suitable for the size, design and operating characteristics of the proposed use. That the site, that the proposed use will be compatible with existing and planned land uses in the vicinity of the property. The proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. And the proposed use is probably located within the city and adequately served by existing. Or planned services and infrastructure. Some notable conditions, so referrals were sent to agencies and city departments that have interest or jurisdiction over the property or intended. Use of the property. In response, Caltrans is requiring an encroachment permit for any work over the Caltrans right-of-way, as well as to establish. Legal access to Highway one oh one from the existing drop curve. Caltrans also expressed concerns about parking. They recommended that onsite parking be reserved for employees only. Since the area is too narrow for vehicles to safely turn around and would require backing out onto Broadway. They also noted that future plans to remove on-street parking for a bike lane could eliminate customer parking nearby. Raising questions about whether the site is suitable for a customer-serving retail use. So city staff carefully reviewed these recommendations and reresponded by adding a parking limitation condition of approval, which. Requires the applicant to acknowledge that there is no guarantee to on-street parking and that its removal is possible in the future. We also require that the on-street, that the onsite parking, if proposed in the future, be limited to employees only. And it also prohibits reliance on unauthorized off-street parking or off-site parking, sorry, so parking on other nearby property owners. Properties. And then requires compliance with future enforcement and review measures to ensure that the site continues to be suitable for cannabis retail use. So staff believe all the required findings to approve the conditional use permit are included in the staff report. And as condition, the project meets all the required findings. For these reasons, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the application. And then I have a suggested hearing when you're ready. Myself and the applicant are available if you have any questions. And thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
For cannabis. Use permits now, who gets routed on the comment request?
For referrals?
Yeah.
City departments, so Public Works, Building, Fire, E P D, and then Caltrans is definitely on that list. P G and E, and then I believe that's it.
Okay.
The tribes. Oh, tribe for ground disturbance. A T and T, Sunlink. Utility stuff. Water board. Our discretionary permits go to a big standard list of agencies and departments.
The question behind the question was really if E P D was still on that list, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And also just to add on that they are required to get a separate city and state licenses that would require those security measures to be taken.
I'm unfortunately familiar with those.
So one other quick question. Per the code, there's no parking requirement. Is that correct?
Correct. They're exempt because they're, they are doing work on a lot that on a, they're not expanding on existing commercial use. That's less than a thousand square feet. Yeah, the code says that if you're going from one non-residential use to another, non-resi, non-residential use, and it has some standard parking, you don't need to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It looks like that's all for questions at the moment. We will open it up for a public hearing. As a reminder, you have three minutes. Please state your name. If the applicant is here, they're welcome to start.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Suzanne. I'm with Margot Advisors. We helped the applicant with his application and we are here both. To answer any questions as they arise. Start again. I'm Suzanne with Margot Advisors. We helped the applicant complete the application. Both he and I are here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kenneth G. Fleck, and I am the owner of the vacant property directly north at twenty-one sixty-nine Broadway. I first heard about this by receiving a letter from the city of Eureka. And to be candid with you, I am, I'm in favor of this application. I know that the property has gone through a couple of owners and been vacant for some time. I know that my own building has had some chronic burglaries, and I'm assuming that this owner would make some substantial improvements to the lighting. And security around the building, and that would benefit me as well. I am a big fan of improving this part of Broadway, and I'm glad to see someone making a private capital investment. To improve this property. And I generally don't know this person at all. But as the owner of the adjacent property, it encourages me to improve my own lighting and security. And if I ever have the capital, perhaps I'll improve my property as well. But I'm happy to see that people are still willing to make a substantial. Capital investment in properties on Broadway. And I would like to see this come about as reasonably soon as possible. And would be cooperative in whatever efforts Mr. Caleb. Solstrom, Solstrom makes. And so I, I suppose I've made my, my two cents about it. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kenneth, for sharing that. You got any hands on Zoom?
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak in public hearing? If so, please raise your hand.
All right, we'll close that public hearing and bring it back. If you want to bring that motion up for us. Bring it up for a motion and discussion.
I'm happy to make the motion and obviously if there's discussion, we can do that. I plan, I move the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the use permit for cannabis retail at twenty-two thirty-five Broadway.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
My only comment is I just want to tip my hat to Mr. Fleck. Really appreciate that kind of supportiveness, taking time out of your. However this goes, taking time out to put in a good word when you really didn't have to.
I agree. Usually people show up in opposition. It's a breath of fresh air. Commissioner Lazar, you had some discussion items?
Yeah, no, I echo Commissioner Mayer and Kraft. Great gratitude. Good to see Ken here. And I believe that, that building was the gentleman who made wood stoves before. Was it, he was the one before you, your spot, Ken? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it was formerly owned by David Robinson for about forty years. He did makes, he did a kind of welding shop. And. It could be some improvement now.
Yeah, so.
I, just for the record, I'm currently using it as a kind of a stored facility.
I think Mr. Fleck's fleshing out this has not been vacant for some time, yeah. But continue, Ken.
Well, I am currently using the building at twenty-one sixty-nine next door as a storage facility and sometime workshop. And I would, like I said, given the capital, I would be happy to improve that property to be a, a possible. Urban residence with studio shops downstairs. We'll see. But I'm happy to see improvements in this part of Broadway.
I guess I just, maybe I have a question for you while you're up here.
Sure.
I am a little bit troubled by Caltrans comments that suggest we not approve this project. I'm not inclined to necessarily do that. But I do think it's worth taking note that there may be a complete lack of on-street, on-highway, off, you know. Parking in the near term as Broadway corridor improvements occur. I believe, I mean, I believe in the staff report, staff, you, you mentioned that. Mr. Fleck's property and this were once together and were separated. Yeah, so. You know, there's a sort of proximity effect, you know, and I think given the nature of the way that Mr. Fleck uses the property. I imagine that your little park, parking area doesn't get occupied except when you're there doing work or picking stuff up or dropping stuff off, right?
My, I have fairly limited traffic, but there is off-street parking.
Yeah, for you, yeah, yeah.
Yes. And my problem up until now is my very tentative investigations is I don't quite have enough square footage. To have a. Minimum requirement for handicap parking as well as other parking. So it's kind of a tight spot there. But I think it's within the possibility that it could happen. So we'll see.
Yeah, it just seemed to me like, and I don't think we can require this, but it is an interesting idea that like should. The highway parking evaporate in the near term or at some point in the future. I really do think given the nature of this business, that's. Not a great scenario. And it's kind of irresponsible to approve. Buildings along a highway that have no customer parking within. You know, the media vicinity. So it would be good to have kind of as a backstop, the ability to develop parking in a close proximity. And given the, the use of Mr. Fleck's property, that would be a logical place to do it, you know, and it could benefit both uses theoretically. But we can't really require that. I just thought I'd bring it up now since it is on the horizon, the possibility.
I think it's a worthwhile thing to think about.
We could include it as a recommendation to consider it, to explore it.
Receptive to. Possibilities of combining the properties for mutual interest. But that's not for today.
No, no, but since you're here.
Thank you.
I appreciate you conducting the discussion. So I, yeah, that was my primary concern I wanted to voice is just that I do think it's a little bit concerning that we might be. Given the nature of the use, I get that the code has, I appreciate the code has a sort of, don't have to do it if it already doesn't comply. I, I like that. But I do think it's not a total lateral in terms of the use. I take that back. I mean, believe it or not, there was a burl shop, there was an Indian gift shop, there was all these different places, all, you know, the Waltz Motel. That became the Blue Hare Motel. That, that, that whole area was packed with different commercial businesses historically, serving the, the kind of visiting touring public. So it's, it's probably a, a lot less intense today. Except for a KFC. But anyways, I, I think we, I think we can move forward. I just, yeah, I appreciate you enter. Tolerating that discussion.
Opportunity for the business to be creative and resilient and maybe do some delivery or. You know, deliver even curbside pickup.
Yeah.
Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? You want to do a roll call vote?
No problem, Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Okay, but it looks like we have no old business or new business. Anything else? No. So we'll move through and adjourn.